Bienvenidos. Por favor, ven y tomad las sillas y comenzaremos. Hoy es un día de información. Queremos compartir algo con ustedes y reunir información. Queremos obtener esa información de ustedes. Mi nombre es Sherry Marcio. Soy una de las moderadoras hoy. También estoy con Steve Oakes. Somos ambos del Comité de Planificación a largo alcance. También estamos con algunos de nuestros otros miembros. Tenemos a Russ Toman, Linda Evansen, Candy Bruggerio y Dennis Stokely. Y serán nuestros microfonos. Estamos aquí hoy planeando... Estamos terminando con nuestra cuarta serie de ayuntamientos. Queremos planear varias sesiones de ayuntamientos durante el año para compartir información y reunir información. Bien. Voy a empezar las diapositivas. Somos el Comité de Planificación a largo alcance, como dije. Estamos creando oportunidades de miembros para colectar información y información de la comunidad. Hoy es un resumen de los proyectos actuales y de la planificación para este año actual. Y después de nuestra presentación de 30 minutos, vamos a abrir el piso para ustedes para dar comentarios. Vamos a capturar sus comentarios y proporcionarles feedback a una fecha más tarde. Nuestra agenda de hoy es esta. Vamos a hablar sobre algunos de los cambios que están en proceso. Vamos a tener un breve resumen de algunos del trabajo que se realizó con ASU y RCSC en formato de estudio de trabajo. Tenemos una pirámide estratégica para presentar, y eso es solo una estructura para la planificación. Hablaré de eso en un momento. Queremos revisar rápidamente nuestra misión, visión y valores y el trabajo que hicimos en eso este año. Un poco de información del presupuesto y financiación. Una breve discusión sobre el plan estratégico de cinco años. Y luego el bulk de nuestra reunión hablaremos y reuniremos información de ustedes respecto a alternativas estratégicas para el plan de vista del monte. Eso no es todo lo que estamos hablando hoy, SAC. Estamos hablando de todos estos otros temas también. Así que si tienen algo que quieran compartir, nos gustaría escucharlo. No tiene que ser específicamente sobre el monte. Esta es una reunión de miembros. Así que si eres un miembro que también suele trabajar en el personal, si eres un miembro que suele estar en el comité que está dando esto, si eres un miembro que suele ser miembro del consejo, por favor, habla y comparte sus comentarios. Nos encantaría escucharlos. Bien, cambios que están en proceso. Ha sido un año ocupado. Ha sido un año muy ocupado. El consejo ha hecho muchas cosas buenas. Hemos visto muchos cambios positivos y progreso. De hecho, nos gustaría agradecer al consejo. Hemos notado un número de miembros del consejo asistiendo a estas sesiones. Quieren escuchar, quieren escuchar lo que tienen que decir. También hemos notado un grupo de candidatos que han estado asistiendo. Y les agradecemos también por venir a escuchar y reunir información. Transparencia, la guía principal para este año. Creo que el consejo lo ha demostrado de varias formas diferentes. Su lenguaje, su positividad, la inclusión de usar a los miembros en diferentes trabajos del comité y la recuperación de la comunicación. Muchas mejoras en la comunicación. Proactiva, enfoque basado en los datos. Es el uso más alto y mejor de fondos es realmente una prioridad y continuará siendo una prioridad. Siempre hay que hacer en esa área. Renueve nuestro foco de mantener todas nuestras instalaciones a estándares de alta calidad. Se torna cada vez más importante como hemos reunido feedback y escuchado lo que la gente quiere ver como cambios. Enfoque pragmático en ayudar a los miembros que realmente están en necesidad. Sabemos que no todos estamos en el mismo nivel financiero. Así que estamos manteniendo nuestros ojos abiertos para formas en que podemos ayudar a todos en nuestra comunidad. Creando un foco para la retención y satisfacción del empleado. Otro objetivo clave que está sucediendo, que se está trabajando este año y no queremos perderle atención a los detalles en eso. Y haciendo nuestro trabajo con una sensación de urgencia. Muy importante mientras avanzamos. Bien, voy a pasarlo a Steve.
Buenas tardes. Otro buen resultado. Esta es una declaración de ustedes, los miembros, que están mostrando que realmente le importan a su comunidad. Están aquí para escuchar y comentar y, con suerte, mejorar nuestra comunidad. Y eso es principalmente lo que es la planificación a largo alcance. Así que, muy rápido, voy a pasar por el resumen de trabajo de ASU. Creo que ha habido muchas personas que no les gustó la encuesta. Muchas personas pensaron que la calidad y la cantidad no era apropiada. Pero mantenemos en cuenta que es la primera encuesta en 20 años. Así que reunimos información que no teníamos. Teníamos respuestas de miembros de 6,000, aproximadamente el 30% de nuestra población miembro aquí. Eso es significativo en cualquier tipo de encuesta. Grupos de focus fueron llevados. Teníamos 140 residentes involucrados allí. Teníamos tres sesiones de trabajo de tres horas. Pero el punto final es que se adquirió mucho de los datos. Algunos de estos son, brevemente resumidos aquí. No esperábamos esto. Estuvimos sorprendidos de saber que caminar por placer fue la actividad número uno que fue respondida en la encuesta. ¿Entonces esto significa que están caminando sus perros? ¿Esto significa que están solo caminando por placer? ¿Están caminando en las carreras que tenemos en Marinette y Fairway? No, en realidad no clarificamos eso. Y luego tenemos la cardiofittnes, siguiente. Caminar en agua, eso está en los baños. Tienes caminar en agua que puede suceder en otros que no sean áreas de caminar de tipo maze. Puede suceder en cualquier baño. Y entrenamiento de peso. Así que por favor, noten que el cardio y el entrenamiento de peso están en los cinco primeros. En realidad, cinco primeros. Así que, ¿dónde está eso? Esos son los centros de fitness. Mucho uso de los centros de fitness. Si miramos los datos de utilización, también verán que hay una muy alta utilización de los centros de fitness, comparativamente hablando. El golf mini viene en número cinco. Golf en número seis. Sentado en el baño, ese es el número siete. Y sí, podrías estar leyendo en el baño. Podrías estar, ya sabes, bañándote en el sol. Podrías estar charlando con amigos. Eso sigue siendo una actividad significativa aquí en Sun City. Y luego el pingolín y nadie, salido en tied, en el lugar número ocho. Con eso, vuelvo a Sherry.
Steve, ¿ha terminado la encuesta de ASU? ¿Estamos listos con eso?
Buena pregunta. Como hecho caso, ha habido trabajo adicional realizado. Fue una encuesta de métricas. Y ahí fue donde ASU salió y encuadralizó otras comunidades como las nuestras. Otras 55+ comunidades. Vieron lo que estaban haciendo en otro lugar. LRP estará estudiando eso pronto, más allá, junto con el personal. Y veremos dónde podríamos tener una oportunidad de mejora allí. Siguiente, tenemos la próxima generación, o las personas que aún no son 55. Esa generación de encuestas está acercándose a completarse. Tenemos mucha información que esperamos recibir de ella. Y creemos que es probablemente una de las encuestas más importantes que podemos obtener para descubrir cómo planificar para el futuro, sabiendo qué busca la próxima generación. Así que tendremos más información sobre eso en los próximos meses.
Genial, gracias. Bien, vamos a continuar con nuestras diapositivas aquí. Y lo que tengo ahora es titulado "Enlazamiento de la línea de vista". El Comité de Planificación a largo alcance comenzó su año sin un plan para la planificación. Bien, estábamos un poco fluminecidos por eso. ¿Cómo no tenemos un plan para trabajar? Así que decidimos hacerlo. Crear un plan y empezar a trabajar ese plan. Comenzamos con esta pirámide. Es una estructura para la planificación. Es un concepto que dice que queremos ser intencionales. Queremos avanzar. Queremos producir esfuerzos y crear continuidad en el camino hacia adelante. Queremos planificar las cosas grandes, pero estar ocupados con las cosas pequeñas y seguir avanzando en la dirección correcta. Así que cualquier organización que prospera y es exitosa tiene un modelo para la planificación. La siguen, la viven y todos en la organización participan en eso. Así que comenzamos con nuestra misión, visión y valores. Eso está en la parte inferior. Miramos un plan estratégico de cinco años y miramos nuestro presupuesto. Vamos a hacer cada una de estas diapositivas muy rápidamente. Misión, visión y valores. Así que comenzamos validando qué es nuestra misión, visión y valores para RCSC. Y lo que encontramos es que eran antiguos. Eran difíciles de encontrar. Las declaraciones no estaban juntas en un lugar en ningún lugar. Y cuando los encontramos, encontramos que carecían de inspiración para tanto la gente como para la planificación. Así que empezamos a reescribirlos. Nos reunimos como comité. Pasamos a diferentes versiones a medida que recibimos información porque dijimos que no podemos decidir esto solo como un pequeño comité. Pregunten al personal, preguntamos al management. Preguntamos a ustedes en varias ocasiones. Preguntamos al consejo por información. Recibimos mucha información de regreso. Construimos muchos de esos comentarios. Consideramos todo lo que escuchamos. Y 12 o 13 versiones más tarde, tenemos lo que vamos a presentar ahora. Son aproximadamente 120 horas de tiempo que pasaron. Así que nuestra propuesta de misión, quiénes somos. Y voy a leer solo en caso de que no lo vean en la parte de atrás. Mantener una corporación financiera sostenible que provee a nuestros miembros con una amplia gama de oficinas de alta calidad, oportunidades recreativas, actividades sociales para mejorar el sentido de bienestar de cada miembro y el propósito. Eso es lo que propone nuestra nueva misión. Nuestra visión, dónde vamos. Comenzamos como el original Sun City. Continuamos visionando, seguimos mirando hacia adelante. Y queremos verse como líder nacional en 55+ de comunidades socialmente activas de estilo. Nuestros valores. ¿Qué valoramos? Valoramos los tipos de cosas en las que trabajamos juntos y por el otro. Tomamos cuidado con nuestras oficinas. Trabajamos y planeamos inteligentemente y cuidamos del futuro. Bien, déjenme leerlos específicamente. Estamos comprometidos con hacer que los miembros sean nuestra prioridad máxima y darles servicio de alta calidad. Valoramos nuestra comunidad amable y bienvenida y queremos pasar eso a las futuras generaciones. Valoramos el trabajo de equipo y la contribución de cada persona a la comunidad. Los últimos tres. Mantenemos y mejoramos oficinas, operaciones y infraestructura a estándares modernos, atractivos y ambientalmente amables. Creemos que los datos y la tecnología deben ser usados para apoyar la salud, la seguridad, la eficiencia y mantener la integridad de nuestros procesos de toma de decisiones. Y planeamos para el futuro y operamos con una sensación de urgencia. Conocidas, espero que puedan encontrar alguna claridad e inspiración en estas declaraciones. Siento que realmente nos hemos reunido como comunidad y he puesto en mucho trabajo bueno. ¿Qué piensan? Bien, el presupuesto. Este es otro de esas capas en la pirámide que presenté. El presupuesto de 2024 es otra... Fue otra área en la que realmente nos hemos reunido como comunidad. En el pasado, esto ha sido un proceso realmente dirigido por el management. El management hizo el presupuesto, lo entregó y dijo: "Aquí está". Pero eso no es lo que pasó este año. Este año nos volvimos socios comerciales con el management. El consejo y el Comité de Financiación, Presupuesto y Audit trabajaron mano a mano con el management para sacar este presupuesto de 2024. Se reunieron todo el verano. Abrieron las reuniones a los miembros. Puedes, muchas veces durante una reunión, puedes hacer una pregunta o pedir una clarificación. Así que fue un proceso completamente diferente. Tres objetivos, tres... Bueno, salió un tema de las discusiones, y eso fue que estamos enfrentando nuevas realidades económicas. Tres objetivos se establecieron como resultado de eso. Y esos objetivos fueron listas capital proyectos expandidos para estar al día con 20 millones de dólares en mantenimiento y equipos deferidos. Bien, ese fue el número uno. Número dos, un aumento en la gasto necesario para reparar y mantenerse para mejorar la condición de nuestras instalaciones y oficinas y asegurarnos de que no entramos en esa situación deferida de nuevo. Y, por último, aumentar los salarios, acercar los precios del mercado y reducir el desplazamiento de los empleados. Muy importante. El presupuesto de 2024 fue aprobado en la última reunión. Más información estará disponible en el sitio web. Cuando esté, te dejaremos saber o aseguraremos de que hay links disponibles para ti. Pero el presupuesto, eso es otra línea en esa pirámide. Y la última línea en la pirámide, la última capa, es el plan estratégico de cinco años. Esta es otra oportunidad, muchas oportunidades este año, para poner nuestra casa en orden. Bien, y este proceso va a comenzar con el gerente general. El gerente general pondrá en conjunto una proyección de cinco años de gastos y ingresos. Y luego le va a pasar eso al Comité de Planificación a largo alcance y Financiación, Presupuesto y Audit. Y vamos a trabajar nuestra magia en eso. Podríamos usar miembros como ustedes si están interesados. Muchas aberturas en los comités, así que por favor considérenlo. Pero queremos... Los objetivos para ese plan de cinco años serían lograr un equilibrio de necesidades con nuestros recursos, asegurarnos de que usemos esas decisiones basadas en datos. Queremos ser transparentes y realistas con nuestra preservación de los activos y nuestro plan de mejora. Y, finalmente, queremos identificar apropiadamente los fondos que son necesarios en nuestra categoría deferida, nuestras actualidades y prioridades futuras. Bien, es un trabajo en progreso. Es una iniciativa de alta prioridad para 2023-2024. Eso concluye lo que voy a hablar. Estamos listos para pasar a SAC.
Un poco de información antes de empezar, específicamente SAC. Esto es algo que ustedes pueden o no ya saben. Aquellos de ustedes que han ido a los otros ayuntamientos ciertamente lo saben. Pero una rápida revisión. 1,000 acres de cursos de golf existen en Sun City o en propiedades de RCSC. 350,000 rondas de golf jugadas por año. 246,000 metros cuadrados de edificios centrales, tales como el que están en ustedes. Más de 70 acres de tierra para centros. Y un millón de visitas más o menos a los centros cada año. Mucho actividad en nuestra comunidad. Esto te da un poco de la tamaño de los centros y el porcentaje de uso. Así que, por supuesto, destacado en la parte superior, el Montevideo y el Lakeview. ¿Por qué? Bueno, esos dos son los más viejos sin renovación. Así que eso lleva a la discusión que el Comité de Alternativas estratégicas estaba trabajando. El Montevideo fue construido en 1967 y solo unos años después, en 1970, el Lakeview fue construido. Por favor, noten un par de cosas relevantes a las dos propiedades. Tienen el Montevideo como el más pequeño, menos de la mitad del tamaño del Lakeview. Y un porcentaje de uso que es aproximadamente la mitad del porcentaje de uso también. De lo contrario, ustedes pueden estar familiarizados con Sundial Bell, Marinette, Grand, Fairway. Gran siendo la instalación más recientemente construida y Oakmont. Todo el resto de estos han tenido alguna forma de renovación o facelift, si se quiere. Así que voy a saltar al Comité de Alternativas estratégicas antes de olvidarme. Queremos agradecer a nuestro equipo audiovisual aquí. Teresa, arriba, Alan, Doreen, muchas gracias. Y Beth, quien va a proporcionarles los planes de alternativas estratégicas como una presentación. Ella ha preparado presentaciones coloridas para ustedes aquí también. Así que apreciamos al personal y el apoyo del management para las reuniones de ayuntamientos, por las que, si no fuera ellos, no estaríamos aquí. Bien, así que un poco sobre el Comité de Alternativas estratégicas. Organización de comité, 16 miembros representando actividades impactadas por una comunidad en general, aquí de diferentes personas. Ya hemos tenido 16 reuniones de dos horas de mayo a octubre. Y las reuniones fueron asistidas por más de 150 miembros de Sun City. Miramos datos y análisis de tendencia. También incluía dos viajes de campo, uno al Centro de Artes de Producción de Mesa y el Teatro de la Estrela. Había investigación individual y grupa, investigación de competidores online y información experta, que si no lo han visto, tuvimos a un arquitecto involucrado para ayudarnos. Extensiva compartida de ideas por varios clubes y intereses. Aproximadamente 450 horas voluntarias pasaron a la revisión del Comité de Alternativas estratégicas estudiando varias áreas que afectarían a la comunidad. Teníamos que abordar los problemas de la ubicación de un centro de arte de producción. Renovación versus un nuevo edificio. Espacio necesario para voleibol, baile, pingolín y algunas de las instalaciones que ya están en el Montevideo. ¿Cuánto dinero se debería usar? ¿Cuál cantidad de espacio es apropiada por la actividad? ¿Y cuál esfuerzo se debería asignar y dónde? Todas esas fueron consideraciones. Y teníamos que balancear los deseos existentes contra las necesidades futuras. Y como dije, estamos tratando de aprender más sobre las necesidades futuras. Tan pronto como sea. Así que teníamos 20 recomendaciones más o menos, alternativas, si se quiere. Estoy usando esas palabras bastante sinónimamente, del Comité de Alternativas estratégicas. Bueno, es un poco difícil trabajar con 20 propuestas diferentes. Así que vamos a hablar de cuatro que el comité acabó con. Video de reuniones, presentaciones, presentaciones disponibles para revisión en el sitio web de RCSC bajo el Comité de Alternativas estratégicas. Pueden encontrar eso al ir a la casilla de drop down de RCSC en el sitio web. Y busquen el Comité de Alternativas estratégicas. Así que voy a empezar con el Plan M. Y la gente... Hay Plan M, hay Plan A, hay Plan B, hay Plan C. La gente ha preguntado, ¿por qué tendrías un Plan M si tienes A, B y C? ¿Por qué no tendrías un D? Bueno, teníamos un arquitecto por el nombre de Marlene. Ella llegó con muchos detalles para esto. Parecía correcto nombrarlo Plan M. El Centro de Artes de Producción permanecería en el Montevideo. Tenía aproximadamente 13,1 millones de dólares como renovación. Todas las actividades existentes permanecerían en el Montevideo, excepto tenis. La fitness aumentó en tamaño, y aproximadamente 5 millones de dólares de mejora allí. Actividades de surf aumentaron y el Centro de Artes de Producción aumentó. En específico aquí, para el surf, había un baile de deportes. Y verán eso en sus dibujos. El pingolín aumentó aproximadamente el 30%, o aproximadamente 3,3 millones de dólares de este plan. Así que en su presentación, les pido que lean aquí. Verán que hay información de costos en la área de dibujo con los detalles de lo que el arquitecto, Marlene, recomendó. Se modificó o se agregó. Las cosas clave que se agregaron, por cierto, es un spa outdoor. El tenis reemplazado por ocho courts de pingolín de outdoor. Y tiene una tapa aquí. Y para ser claros, es una forma de una tapa dura, pero no completamente definida. Y había una extensión donde el spa outdoor, o el spa interior fue una extensión del centro de fitness que también ocupó un poco de ese espacio donde está la ubicación del spa interior. Así que eso es... Verán los highlights que están a la derecha y los números uno a siete no correlacionan con los números de costos dentro del dibujo. Esos son solo los highlights a la derecha. Bien, volveremos a todo esto para preguntas. Voy a pasar por los planes muy rápidamente ahora. Plan B, y voy a saltar a Plan B porque hay más información involucrada aquí. Eso tiene un pacto que permanecería en el Montevideo con algunas mejoras, tales como la plantación y mejoras de entrada y salida. Sin embargo, sin la ayuda del arquitecto, no se han añadido estimaciones de costos aquí. Así que la pregunta ha sido preguntada en otras reuniones de ayuntamientos. ¿Por qué tendrías un plan que tenga información del arquitecto? Y tienes tres otros planes que no tienen información del arquitecto. Así que si no les importa, voy a cortar esa pregunta en caso de que venga. Diciendo que no contrataron al arquitecto para ir más allá de Plan M y, por lo tanto, no teníamos el tiempo o el dinero o el contrato para obtener información adicional del arquitecto. Sin embargo, eso está siendo examinado para obtener más información, quizás viniendo. 12 nuevos courts de pingolín de interior a aproximadamente 21,000 metros cuadrados. El costo de ocho courts se estimó en 10 millones. Mantén ese número en cuenta porque puede aplicarse a otros planes. El centro de fitness aumentó en tamaño. En lugar de aproximadamente 5,000 metros cuadrados, aumentó a aproximadamente 15,000 y es 7,5 millones de dólares allí. Creo que la forma más fácil de pensar en el centro de fitness es como pensar en Fairway. Si has ido a Fairway y sabes cómo se ve el centro de fitness en Fairway, imagina algo similar a eso, solo que aproximadamente del mismo tamaño que el Fairway o aumente sustancialmente. Bien, así que... Fairway tiene, solo para recordar, tiene los restos, los salones, los baños en el piso inferior y encima está el área del centro de fitness. Así que el concepto se aplicaría al Montevideo de una manera similar. O en la forma de Plan M, una versión menor o en la forma de Plan B, una versión mucho mayor. ¿Pueden mantener las preguntas hasta que termino?
Solo estoy tratando de entender. Así que, ¿Plan B sigue hablando sobre el Montevideo?
Plan B es sobre el Montevideo, sí, correcto.
¿Y Plan A y Plan C están hablando?
Vengo a hacer esos siguientes, sí.
Solo quería aclarar lo que están viendo.
Estamos viendo el Montevideo, sí. Aunque Plan A, explicaré una pequeña desviación a eso en un momento. Bien, estoy seguro de que habrá más preguntas. Lo veremos. Así que ese es Plan B para el Montevideo. Así que solo para ser claro, eso es todo lo que hemos hablado hasta ahora, es Plan M, Plan B, el Montevideo. Así que esto te da la visual donde podrán ver aquí, arriba en la parte superior, los courts de tenis que están aquí. El tenis sería reemplazado por ocho courts de pingolín de interior. Posiblemente otro cuatro hace 12 aquí. Bien, así que esta área aquí ya es de courts de pingolín. Esos existen como courts de pingolín de outdoor. La única diferencia es que esos podrían convertirse en interior como parte del total de ocho outdoors que se muestran aquí para el área de tenis. Ahora, para ir más allá de la discusión sobre el aspecto de los nuevos edificios, actualmente tienen un área de oficina, un área de oficina, o un cubo muy pequeño, supongo que es una mejor forma de llamarlo, aquí. Y esta es la entrada hacia el baño. Y esto sería la entrada al centro de fitness. En este caso, diferente de Plan M, tendrías un área de lobby en lugar de que esto sea solo fitness aquí. Una área de personal para almacenar. Y luego más allá, como donde está el spa interior más un área completa aquí que es nada más que una mesa de picnic con concreto con una tapa y nada más. Nunca lo he visto usado. Así que la idea fue, ¿por qué no usar el área inutilizada? Y lo expandes hasta la línea de fachada junto al campo de golf aquí. Entonces tendrías ventanas de vidrio que veían la área del baño y vidrio en este lado vería el campo de golf hacia el sur. Bien, eso solo te da una idea de cómo se ve el Plan B. Bien, así que retrocediendo a Plan A, un poco en el enfoque hodgepodge aquí. Pero Plan A es cambiar, como la señora de atrás estaba preguntando, ¿es todo el Montevideo? Sí, es todo el Montevideo. Pero lo que realmente cambia aquí es que el Centro de Artes de Producción no estaría en el Montevideo. Sería en otras instalaciones, tales como el Lakeview, que se debió discutir considerablemente en las primeras reuniones de SAC. Y luego el área azul aquí es donde verán 12 courts de pingolín existirán. Y donde el Centro de Artes de Producción está ubicado, en esta área rosa, serían ocho courts de outdoor. De nuevo, como se mostró previamente, tendrías un área de lobby, un área de almacenamiento y luego un área de fitness que seguiría con el mismo concepto que se explicó en Plan B. ¿Dónde está...? Oh, me olvido de decirles sobre el spa outdoor, perdón. Y creo que es Plan M y otros planes. Está mostrado en esta área justo aquí. Oh, no, espere un momento. Está mostrado en esta área justo aquí para un spa outdoor. Pero realmente tienes área alrededor de este baño que... that the outdoor spa could be placed, particularly in this area back here where it's just rock exposed area. So outdoor spa wasn't determined where it would go. But in all plans, an outdoor spa was expected to be added because we've eliminated the indoor spa. That's been closed for a while. Okay? That's Plan A. And Plan C. Plan C does not move the Performing Arts Center, the theater. Instead, it has the pickleball courts take over where lawn bowling is. And the tennis courts get converted to six outdoor pickleball courts with a patio area. Now, in this plan, it was thought that there's not sufficient area if you try to enclose eight pickleball courts and don't have room for people to sit. All you have is barely passage area to be able to get from inside to outside or into a court and out of a court, maybe. And eight pickleball courts would not fit in the four pickleball court area, particularly as indoor. So in this case, it was reduced to six courts with a patio area, which if you've seen in Marionette in particular, there's lots of different patio areas surrounding the pickleball courts. Pickleballers would like to sit down before and after. So I think that covers most of the key areas of the plan. So here, just so you know, you have eight indoor courts, six, that's 14, plus you have the seven right here that would remain as they are outdoor. So in this plan, you have 21 courts total. All right? Any, anything else I'm forgetting? Let me see here. All right? So some guidelines for our comments because, yeah, I'm going to come to you in just a second, sir. We're just going to go. In just a second, we'll get to everybody's questions. State your name and recreation card number, please. And this is just so that we know who you are. Make your comments brief. There are others that would like to speak. We have thought to have a timekeeping of about three minutes, just like they do in the member exchange. We're going to try not to have to use a timekeeper, but just hate to cut someone off. So we ask you to please be brief. Raise your hand to be recognized and someone will come around and bring the microphone to you and get you recognized for speaking. As I just said, microphones will be used for your comments so you can be heard. And please remember, we're all in this community together to share and enjoy the facilities and each other. So polite and respectful communication is appreciated. All right? With that, let's open it up. Got quite a few hands over here. We have some hands here.
Who is the first person over there?
The lady in blue, actually, over there, if you would, Linda.
Would you like me to stand or I can sit?
If you just identify yourself and you choose whether you want to stand or sit.
Okay, my name's Mary Dollman-Shopper. My number is, see if bingo works here, 128442. The, I've been in many pickleball discussions, so we'll start out with that. I'll just list my questions. All right? What we have on Plan M and A through C, if you add all the pickleball courts up, you're looking about 70 courts. I'd like to know where it sits now. How many people on average are playing pickleball? And then for those like me who have serious spine problems, you'll never see me on the court. I'd like to know if there is going to be some type of drop in annual fee because I'm not using it and I don't wish to support it. The other part of this is that I would like to, if any consideration has been given to the disabled, whether it's knees, hips, whatever, eventually you'll get there, and sundial. I would like to see the sundial, the athletic area where you've got the weight training, where you've got the bikes, made to the size of Lakeview. Because there's nothing in the plan that assists anybody with the disabled to be able to go in and get some exercise. And you have handy capables already there. Last comment. Being in Arizona, pretty much everybody's got a hangtag for disabled parking. I would like to see Sun City do something that if you need it, which means a doctor has prescribed it, then you can use it. Otherwise, leave it for the people who need it. Thank you.
Just a clarification there. I don't know how you came up with the number of 70, but the most courts that were shown was 21 courts at Mountain View total. And you have 20 up at Marionette. That would be a total of 41 in the total community.
To the point, how many people are playing pickleball?
I understand your question, ma'am. I just want to clarify, you said 70 and it's not 70. They're not, you don't do all the plans together. It's only one plan at a time.
Hi, I just kind of like to, I'd like to answer this lady's, some of your concerns there. The Long Range Planning Committee is data-driven. And I believe we have some kind of a data sheet that shows the usage for pickleball. Do you have something like that we can show up here? We estimate that in five years, we'll have between, looking at the numbers, because I'm kind of a data person, we'll have between 4,000 and 5,000 pickleball players. There's also pickleball for people that have knee problems, strokes. We call it modified pickleball. So you'd be welcome to come. We also have lessons, five-day introductory classes for anyone to come in, all volunteers, teach these. Every day of the week, pretty well, we have classes. And for someone that hasn't played pickleball, it is very much not just physical activity. It's very good for your mental health. It's, the social aspect of it is unparalleled. You walk by the courts and it's the only time I've seen grown men in their 60s and 70s that will actually have belly laughs. And we also have a large group of 80-plus pickleball players. So you would fit in even with often spinal problems or whatever you may have. And so I'd like to see, do we have that? That, there we are.
Right up there.
Excellent. And what this shows, because I've printed it out, is that our usage over the year, and that's last year, is somewhere around 70%. And it goes up, pardon me? At the moment, we probably, we have around 1,200. And by the end of this year, see the line at the end line? By the end of this year, that pink line, we'll have probably 1,400 in the club. And in five years, my estimate, like I said, is 4,000 to 5,000 people. So we really need to look five years ahead, not look today. So there is a huge amount of pickleball players right now. So that, that other chart shows that at some times, we have about 100 and, what is it, 114? I've got all these. 116% usage on the courts. And this is last year's numbers. Average 70% usage, which means we definitely need more courts. Paradise RV Park, which is maybe half a mile up the road here, they've just added new courts. And they have 950 people spots, or whatever you want to call them. And they've went from five courts to seven courts. A lot of players are now going into different places. And we really want to be cognizant of the fact that people are looking for pickleball and we want to keep our property values up. And if we don't supply something like that, we're going to be in trouble a few years down the road. And I empathize with the people that want to, that are looking at a new performing arts center. Absolutely. There's a lot of things we need. And if we have the money and we can do, you know, these Plan A, some of the plans like Plan C, they don't have the theater in there. But in my opinion, I don't see $13 million to renovate a theater, however. Okay, am I going over?
Yeah, that's over time.
Okay, okay. Thank you all. Thanks to the committee, too.
What we're going to do is try to get to everybody we can with first-time speakers today and then come back to people that want to have further comment, okay? So we want to focus on the first-time speakers.
So my name is Tammy Ohm and my number is 146009. I've been here since 2018. I just want to address some of the things in your presentation. Under your change in process statements, you said your focus was on maintaining all facilities in a high standard. Well, no one has maintained Mountain View in a high standard. So we missed that. You said urgency for cost-effective. I don't know how many years this has been going on, but I'm part of the third meeting to figure out what to do with Mountain View. So obviously, urgency and cost-effective was not an issue. You'd use the ASU survey to support your things. The number-one thing was walking for pleasure. We don't even have that in the plan. I get it. But you didn't, we didn't use data-driven decision there. 40% mini-golf. You only had 20% pickleball. I realize that was a survey done by ASU. And I understand pickleball has become a nationwide thing. But the point of the SAC meeting was it determined what to be done with Mountain View with the focus on the PAC. It was not with a focus on a particular club's needs or interest. And somehow that got lost. I'm sitting here as a person who attended 15, almost 15 of the 16 SAC meetings. Plan A and Plan C were voted down by the SAC committee and you were only supposed to see Plan M and Plan B. So don't know what happened and why they're even talking about this. But if you look at Plan A, they want to move the PAC to Lakeview. This was lengthy discussed and it was decided it was not feasible. The most cost-effective thing was to renovate the PAC. I think as a community, our focus needs to be on us. I have children who also want to live here when they're 55. They can pay for some of the things they want. I want to pay for the things that we want, keeping in mind the future. Yes, pickleball's hot. All my kids play it, all my grandchildren play it. I realize that. But I'm not bumping the PAC to give you more courts.
I have one here in the front row.
My name's Milton Lebsak, 130662. First of all, I want to say that I, since I've been back the last few weeks, I've seen numerous positive changes in maintenance. And I want to commend everybody involved for that. I have specific comments in regards specifically to indoor pickleball. Indoor courts. The only plan that makes any sense to me is Plan M because it has been studied and has shown some cost estimates and shows some additional outdoor pickleball courts. In my mind, indoor pickleball courts is a luxury that Sun City cannot afford. I looked up an internet search of existing indoor pickleball courts. And curiously enough, the first one that came up was The Villages in Florida, which has 200 outdoor courts. As of, in a newspaper article in The Villages newspaper in November of 2022, just about a year ago, says that they are now, for the first time, in a purchase agreement to purchase an existing 40,700-square-foot building with 16 indoor pickleball courts, which is previously privately owned and is adjacent to but outside of the limits of the present Villages complex. This was going to be on a 4.69-acre parcel, which would, something comparable would take up virtually all the space at Mountain View. In addition to that, they would, they mentioned that these courts would be accessible only by going over a major arterial road, which would probably prohibit the use of golf carts. But the only, they also indicated that once this facility was built, which they expected it to be built in 2023, I do not know whether that's been done or not. But their preliminary indications were that they wanted to charge pickleball members an additional initiation fee of $1,000, which would raise to $1,500 upon completion and opening of the facility, in addition to a monthly payment, membership payment of $100. In addition to this, they've also have plans to acquire as many, as many sites for as many as 15 indoor pickleball courts for an approximate cost of $180 million plus additional millions of dollars for technology improvements. This sounds to me like an invitation for somebody whose priority is indoor pickleball courts. Maybe you should look at The Villages.
Go ahead, Linda.
Hello. My name is Nancy Conan. My number is 110626. I live one block from the Mountain View Center. This is my 13th winter and I just love it here. I would like to support Plan M. I think it meets the needs of the largest number of residents. It adds pickleball courts. It provides a space for the Performing Arts Center. It keeps lawn bowling and mini-golf. It refinishes the pool. It adds a sports pool. And it's in budget. The longer, the longer we wait to make a decision and move forward, the more expensive it's going to be. And like I said, it's in budget, like many of you. I've sat through meetings. I've talked about this. We've gone round and round. The important thing is that we make a decision soon and we move forward. I have one other point. Until such time as construction starts, the existing facilities need to be maintained. The mini-golf has been down for over a year. And that would be nice. I realize it's expensive to put in carpet. But if we're going to be playing around for another two years, let's use the facility. The spa probably is not an option. But again, I support Plan M. It's in budget and it's time to move forward.
Okay, I have one here.
My name is Al Bazone, 124195. And I came here mainly, I've been playing pickleball here for many years. Matter of fact, I had major spinal surgery and what brought me back was pickleball. They really help you out. You might want to try that. Yesterday, I played three and a half hours straight. I'm 78 years old. I started when I was a young, lower 60s. This summer, or this summer, I couldn't play more than one or two games. I'd vomit it, I got nauseated. It's horrible. You just can't do it, especially when you're older. It gets to you, it could cause strokes and everything else. So I just wanted to get that in, that it's so important. I see six pickleball courts in this building here. Maybe it could be used in the summertime. I don't know. But they need, they need an air-conditioned pickleball courts. And the other thing I just wanted to hit on was, I had a thought. This is Sun City, the city of volunteers. I don't understand why we don't look into seeing if people will volunteer. Like, I could do the electrical of the building. Another person could do the framing and other people can do other things and build it ourselves and cut out that expensive labor cost. I'm just throwing that in. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis. Dennis, have someone back there?
No. Just a stiff knee, folks. My name is Richard Hannan. My REC number is 146244. And I just want to thank the SAC committee for their hard work in trying to get this thing resolved so that we can move forward. They spent many, many hours getting this done. And I was in on quite a few SAC committee meetings. And I just appreciate every one of them. What I want to talk about today is pools. Now, in the ASU survey-- Now, in the ASU survey result, the 22 member use by activity, golf was number one with 353,000. Swimming was number two with 343,000. When you look at pools for Sun City, we have one gym pool. That is Bell Pool. It is structured with controlled temperature year around, which is very, very important for health. If we do a lap sports pool in Mountain View, and I support that we do that, we need to make sure that we have a temperature controlled pool. So you have a resort pool that you can have at a higher temperature because there's not very much activity. There's much data that I presented to the SAC committee, but just to be brief, you can go up to 88 degrees for leisure pools. But when you get to lap pools or activities that are a little more strenuous, you need to be between 79 and 82 degrees. Otherwise, what you risk is hypothermia and hyperthermia. Hyperthermia is when you get overheated because you can't get rid of the exchange heat in the pool. And you get low blood pressure and pass out and possibly drown. So we've been very lucky in Sun City. I do not think we've had any casualties that way. But when you look at Fairview or Fairway and Oakmont, Lakeview, all of these pools get very dangerous in the summertime. I've done temperatures in Lakeview at 92 degrees and had to shut down swimming lessons because it was too hot. So my thing is we do need a lap pool. It doesn't have to be eight lengths long. Heck, it can be three to four lengths, four lanes long. We just ask that it have the proper markings that is for a lap pool and it be used for that purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First time comments.
Do you have someone there? Dennis?
Oh, I thought he had somebody there. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sandy Passick, 119180. And I just wanted to say that I really enjoy water aerobics and I don't hear any mention of that. And I don't know if anybody takes in consideration it should be above or below your chest line. And at the sundown, it's perfectly, perfect temperature, the warmer therapy pool to me. The only thing is there's not much room for tall people. And I was, it would be nice if that type of class was more central to everybody, but there was something else. I just want to mention that to you.
Are you familiar with Elsa Will? She's president of the Aqua Fitness Clubs here in Sun City. She was on the SAC committee.
I don't want a robot tell me how to teach. I want music and I want to teach my own class. And I did teach for seven years and I've, I would like to be certified and teach here, but I don't feel like it's a style for me, so.
Okay, I'm Doug Lorenz. Yeah, Doug Lorenz, 1, let's see, 156897. I live up by Bell, but I wholly endorse the Plan M. And I have a number of reasons. I participated and attended some of the SAC committees and, can you hear me okay? I participate, okay, I shake a little bit, I'm sorry. And I also have, this is the second meeting I've attended, but I didn't speak last time. But the reasons I think it's real important, even though I live up by Bell, I think this is an important area that we need to develop for, for Plan M. I saw the, I was, I attended the architect when she kind of took control of the SAC committee and organized it and picked the essential kinds of things that we need for Mountain View. I think she did a great job and I guess we paid for that, didn't we? Didn't we pay the architect? Okay. She did a great job. Being a former architect or landscape architect, I just felt she did a great job. So that's one thing that happened. The SAC committee did a great job and she helped organize it because there were a lot of things going on at the time. The second reason is Mountain View just deserves to be upgraded. You know, it needs to be a nice facility and I endorse that. Also, let's see, Mountain View, its location, it's in the southern part, you know, and this part of our Sun City certainly needs that kind of development. I think the Performance Arts Center is essential. Mountain View deserves it. They have a small one. The architect modified it and it's going to look great. Pickleball. I'm a tennis player. They took our tennis, they're going to take the tennis court, but we didn't mind because we have a great facility up at Bell and we're satisfied with that. So pickleball is a growing, essential part of people our age. You know, it's easy to learn. Tennis is a lot harder to learn. A pickleball is a great sport. I play it myself, even as a tennis player. Finally, I think the money is right for it, too. You know, we're not going to spend any more money than we had planned to. I think the board needs to vote on it. They need to move on it quickly and get the darn thing built so we can start enjoying it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen Main, 156706. I live in the Mountain View area. I have only been here for about three years. When I was first shopping for a home, the original architectural design for Mountain View was made public. And I will have to say, that was one of the reasons why I purchased the condo that I did in that neighborhood. One of my, I have two, two questions. What was the cost that we paid the most recent architect for her, just recently? The woman, the woman who's helped with these designs? How much? Okay, so this is my point. This is one of, this is one of my points that I want to remind us all about. We paid an exorbitant amount of money for the original architectural designs, which were gorgeous. What happened to those? What, well, my second point is we have now spent more money for another architect, for another set of designs, which as we're hearing in the room, many support because it provides a diversity of offerings. I like to, you know, I'm representing, I think, a little bit more of the younger demographic in Sun City. And what's really important to me is a diversity of offerings. My expectation here in Sun City is that we are offering state of the art and exquisite offerings that are a diversity. I support pickleball, play to your heart's content, but there are other things that we need in Sun City. We need art. We need music. We need theater. We need sport. We need recreation. We need fitness. So I support this Plan M. It seems to be the most feasible and at this point now is the most affordable. I, I'm just going to be honest also and say, I'm growing weary of this. And I'm also growing resentful, I'm sorry ma'am, towards pickleball players. I'm really getting a little bit of resentment. And I don't want to feel that way about my community. I want a lot of different offerings that allow all of us to have health and wellness. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to say, I'm sorry that I can't stay because I still work full time. I took my lunch break without lunch to come here, so I've got to run.
But diversity, just not pickleball players. I will tell you, I'm Jeff Henderson, 139680. And I have learned in here who does not play pickleball. That's very clear. Pickleball must be the enemy. I, I'm kind of shocked, to be honest with you. But what I was curious, the lady over here asked about the usage numbers for the Marinette.
Yes.
What was the percentage? I mean, that, the real numbers, I think, you know, it's ironic, the gentleman up here was saying that, you know, indoor pickleball is a luxury, but a $13 million theater isn't. I, I don't understand that. So I really want to stay with numbers instead of people's opinions. What was the number?
Jeff, we have here 70%. 69.5% is the utilization rate at Marinette for this annual period. There were highlighted months.
So is that consistent with, in other words, if we took all these activities and removed everyone's personal opinion, which is really all that people are talking about, and we gave them letters, so they didn't have the stigma of a pickleball player or a golfer or the, would that be, where would that fall in the usage statistics compared to the other activities available?
It's very high.
Highest? I mean, we should know these, right? This is the real, I mean, that's other, if you remove everybody's opinions and you gave these all a letter and then took the actual statistics and then took the amount of money that you're willing to spend in total and divide the resources accordingly, that's probably the only fair way. And I guess if we don't do that, we're saying that people's personal tastes or interests are what's going to decide this. And I hate to say this, but it refers me to the letter that the, one of the board of directors wrote to the Daily Independent where he identified Mr. Flag, not Flag. Who was it? Fast, Fast. He identified two people in the pickleball club, a Dan and a Karen, and he said that they are expert pickleball players and he wanted to identify that because he only plays it for fun. Now, those are fellow board members of the president of the pickleball club. What he's basically saying in a letter is it's not that important to me. There's no other way to read that. This gentleman's saying, I like pickleball. This gentleman likes theater. The luxury, 13 million for a theater, what are the statistics on the theater attending? Is that going to revive Mountain View or is it just going to continue the same with a nicer building? The numbers are what should speak. So if, if we're not going to use the numbers, the real numbers, when we show our card that everybody does, then we're all admitting that we're just going to go by personal opinion or whoever has the most influence or whoever attends the meetings. We're either going to go by the numbers or we're not. Pickleball's not the enemy.
Can I share some numbers? Can I share some numbers with you on that, Jeff? You're asking a question and SAC did see numbers at one point. So the players and some of the other clubs had recommended that they could use a facility and have attendees of about 5,700 in a year. So these are different numbers in the utilization number you're seeing here, but just to give you a comparison as you're asking for, 5,700 attendees to plays and events in a year. Now, we could show you other numbers here on the Players Club and I'll do that in just a moment, but I need to simplify this for a moment. Compare that to the Marinette usage rate on pickleball. 57,000 people of play activities, okay? So, okay, so, and I just put that out because you asked for it, all right? And since you've asked for it, I will back up and show you.
All of these charts are available on the RCS website under a new menu option called Town Hall, so you can go and look at, download or read them there.
Let's go back to what you were asking for on the performances. Now, this is just players and I want to be very clear. This is one group, only one group, that we could use a performing arts center or theater, however you prefer to call it, all right? It does not include some of the others that SAC considers, such as tip top dancers, ukulele club. There are other clubs that can be using it. So just, we're looking at what we think is a significant group for use of a theater. And what you'll take a look at here is that in the most recent numbers, this is taking a look at players' audience attendance for entire season. In this case, the most recent season, which is this 2023-2024 estimated number, you had about, what, 1,700? Prior year was about 3,000, so for some reason it dropped here. Then if you look at the average audience, 100, that's about what, 180 for average audience in the prior year and estimated for this year is about 140. So that's just for players. Just to be clear, it's not all possible theater using groups, okay? But we consider a significant group usage. Now, back, give me just a moment to do the comparison with you here. So this is a pickleball activity chart that only goes through 2022. The chart that was shown earlier that was requested was utilization of a more current number in 2023, showed about 70%. But here, to your point, you're at 2023 usage with both Mountain View and Marinette, probably combined at about 80,000 activity usage, okay? That is a correct number. That is a correct number. Okay, so I just wanted to address, he asked the question. That's the information that we have shared in Strategic Alternatives Committee. Okay, so again, we're trying to stay with first time people first, okay, to speak.
Bill Loslow, 161638. I am a member of the SAC committee. I have attended the meeting since the first of May and two of the things they're presenting today were rejected by the committee. They were not, they did not carry a vote. We only have voted for the two that included everything. So you're listening to something that shouldn't even be presented because the committee did not recommend it. And the other thing that people seem to not understand is theater and performing arts is a necessity of any community and we don't have that. And I know that there's 1,100 pickleball players, but that means there's also 33,000 people in Sun City that don't play pickleball.
Okay, just for a point of clarification on Mr. Loslow's comment there as well, so everybody understands what he's referring to. He said there were two plans that were not approved by a Strategic Alternatives Committee and there was a vote. On Plan C, it was seven to seven. That doesn't mean it was approved or disapproved. It was, it was a tie. And then the other one, Plan A, was eight to six. And therefore you could say that that was maybe a simple majority, but certainly not a consensus. Lacking a consensus on the Strategic Alternatives Committee, the board has specifically stated that it's strategic alternatives. That's plural and therefore that gives you more alternatives for the consideration.
Steve, can I expand on that rather than make a different comment? My understanding of those votes were what the committee was going to present to the board. I don't think there was anything in there that said it should not be presented to the members.
Thank you for that clarification, Dennis.
Carol Mattoon, 83124. You can tell by my number that we've been here for a long time, 31 years. Every time that you fix up one of the rec centers, we're always wanting a performing arts center and we never get it. Lots of auditoriums that don't get much use. And when you use that number for the amount that goes to the plays, we don't go to the plays because it's too uncomfortable. And why don't you include in that the concerts that we have in the auditorium here? Add that number to that. We go to that, but the chairs are so darn close together that you're squeezed together. So. So I'm glad that we're going to have a performing arts center and you're going to fix it up, but I think it should be big enough that it would hold enough people that we could have our concerts there and have a lot of different activities that would be available to us if we had a decent place for people to go and sit.
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, I'm Lana Williams. I'm on the SAC, and I support Plan M. My number's 159495, sorry. Okay, the reason we are seeing four plans is because there wasn't a consensus. Why were all the other four, every other vote we have had on the SAC was fine? And that's because it didn't go against pickleball. We have never had a consensus, never, on the SAC. But every vote was accepted. Every vote was accepted, except for this last vote. This last vote to present Plans M and C, B, what, what?
B.
Uh huh? Okay. Is, the vote was six to seven, okay? It was not seven to seven. Somebody did not like how the vote went. So, okay, let's vote again. We didn't like the last vote, so let's do it again. Okay, another thing, Steve, at the last meeting, you pointed out a picnic area that you thought should become pickleball. Not at all any thought toward any other possibility like volleyball. Where here in Sun City, you can only play volleyball in a pool or you have to go to, a lot of them go to Sun City West or elsewhere to play volleyball. But that wasn't even a thought. All you could think about was pickleball, okay? And this question was asked of you at the last meeting, Steve, is who? Whose idea was it to bring four plans? One person had to initiate it. So whose idea was it to present four plans? After the SAC, we voted, whether you liked the vote or not, we voted to present only two plans to the town hall meetings. And you never did answer that after you were asked twice at the last meeting. Do you have an answer today?
Excuse me, I thought we agreed we weren't going to attack.
No, it's not an attack, no. That's a question. He was asked that question at the last meeting. All right, I'm going to finish. Okay. Okay, and one point was that we've never had a consensus at any of our meetings, okay? Pickleball in the months of February, March, and April and May, they average 600 guests a month that come in and play pickleball. Okay, we live in Sun City, and we have to think about everything. When you're talking about Mountain View, you have to talk about the pool, you have to talk about the golf, you have to talk about lawn bowling, the fitness center, you have to look at the P A C, you have to look at the overall package, not just one club, which this has become, just like every other SAC meeting, total pickleball. Regarding the sports pool at Mountain View, that should be one of the things we really need to think about because they need a walking pool there, you know, not just a sport pool for doing laps. A walking pool would also benefit there.
That's timed up.
Ma'am, can you wrap, can you wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Okay, we have one here.
Hi. Hi. Hi, my name's Jan Schmidt, 44764, I think, something like that. Anyway, I've been here since 2004, and I agree with a lot of this. I've seen a lot of improvement, and I agree that we always have to keep up and improve things. And pickleball has taken over, but I'm just wondering, we're making all these plans, what happens when pickleball kind of runs out of, you know, being popular and goes back to something else, something more? Yeah, just, you know, keeps going, and just things, things are not all, you know, the same all the time. First it was tennis, and then, and I remember my parents playing bougie, what is it? Bougie bocce ball? And they had, you know, so we need to think about things like this when we're spending all the money. Now, pickleball has taken over Marinette once a month, at least. We used to try to play cards, and there's other leather, the leather works and stuff. When they have their tournaments up there, you can't get a parking place. At first, they were trying to save us a parking place, and then, then they said, well, they can't. And so we have no parking when we want to go in and do our club, our other clubs on Saturdays when pickleball has their tournaments. So, yeah, I'd like to see some, another club take over, you know, go someplace else on tournaments, so it's not all at one in Marinette. But I have another reason to be talking about all of these improvements. What happens when we're getting these, yeah, the group homes coming in here? And I'd like to know more about that. And then after that is solved, then we can think about taking our money and doing a lot more improvements, because I'm afraid that people will quit moving in when, when these group homes come in. And I don't know if anybody knows about it, but we do, and it's not good.
Do I wait? Somebody else? I would like to go on with that because this is a total change of subject, but I want to thank the Long Range Planning Committee because that, you guys have made so much sense to me. Thank you for your hard work and your common sense. And this relates to the gold pyramid. My name, my name is Linda Schmidt, 139335. And this, again, is on a little different subject, but it relates to the gold pyramid of the Long Range Planning for Sun City, for Sun City's finances. And even though I'm going to refer to the Sun City Homeowners Association, this is very pertinent to the rec centers of Sun City. Most people in Sun City are aware that Sun City is unincorporated. Most people in Sun City do not realize that means we are just another unincorporated land area in Maricopa County. Some people are still under the illusion that our CCNRs as a 55 and over community give us some kind of protection against hostile state and county governments. The truth is, we have no legal protections for our CCNRs or any legal way to ensure compliance. The county used to have some respect for Sun City to maintain certain standards. Increasingly, Maricopa County is looking at Sun City as just another piece of land to develop how they want. Therefore, any building project that is legal in the county of Maricopa is legal in Sun City. This has been made obvious with the building of several large RV garages that are not attached to residences.
Excuse me, ma'am? Excuse me, these are all Shoah.
These are, these Shoah, these, these are not Shoah questions. These are recreation centers on Sun City questions. The reason.
I wish I could agree with you there, but I can't.
But Shoah, if people let these group homes in.
Ma'am, ma'am.
If, if they let the group homes in.
It's a Shoah issue.
Shoah, Shoah has no power. They have no power and they have no money.
The RCSC doesn't have jurisdiction over that.
They need to.
Thank you, thank you.
We're dealing with RCSC properties. You want to speak?
We have a first-time speaker back here.
Go ahead, go ahead, back there. Let me on now? Okay.
My name is Jean Felbo. My card number is 118273. I didn't hear when you said how much the architect was paid. Could you repeat that?
It wasn't actually stated, ma'am, what the architect was paid. And there were different architects. If you're talking about the one that got involved years ago, there was a certain amount of money, I don't know what that was. And then the most recent one was paid for just consulting work, not for much more.
We don't, we don't know that exactly. We don't know that exactly.
Roughly. My other question is about a timeline. I love the plans. I've been a winter resident for 22 years, and I'm saying the last 10 years, I've been hearing about updates to Mountain View. When I arrived, it was a nostalgic, charming rec center. Now it's just dilapidated. So my question is, has a timeline been addressed?
No. The answer is no. Not at this time. Okay? Other first timers?
Jim Kepler, 127409. I would like to remind everybody that the first Mountain View proposal was rejected by this board because it was too expensive. Plan M is the only one that meets this criteria. The others eliminate things. Hopefully, maybe in the future, we might get a performing arts theater somewhere. It doesn't make sense. The performing arts theater isn't just for performing arts. If anyone has had, been in a group that wants to schedule live music here, we have Sundial and we have Bell, and everybody knows Bell is just about adequate. If we had a performing arts theater that you could actually move the seats out and use that, people would attend to that. I would like to also remind people that Sun City has been built on something for everybody, not some, not everything for one group. We can't help that all of a sudden pickleball became so popular that you want to squish out all the other groups or some of the other groups just so you can have more pickleball courts. That's just wrong. The theater has been kicked around long enough. It's going to be used from far more than a theater. And as was pointed out, there's 35,000 of us that don't play pickleball, and the only way you can get more courts, you're getting eight courts, I thought the board did a good job with that, but you want more. And you don't care who you get squished or pushed out of the way in order to get it. There is no space unless you eliminate someone so you can have your way. Thank you.
Go ahead, Linda.
Preston Kais, 133903. Mountain View has been, is a candidate that's been kicked down the road for, what, 10 years or something like that? The performing arts center has been kicked down for just as long. My, my thought process is if you move a facility like the performing arts center or a lawn bowling court off of the Mountain View area, with the idea that a future board is going to approve funds for that, you're, I don't know who you're, I don't think that's a wise plan. If you're going to move something off it, then in this phase of doing things for Mountain View, the monies for that need to be appropriated now, because if you wait for future boards to approve it, they may or may not, or they may do what this board did, which was a wise thing, and say, no, we just can't afford it. So if you can't move facilities, if you're going to move facilities out of, and activities out of Mountain View, put them in other places, you need to allocate the monies for that now. And if those monies aren't available now, which I suspect in many cases they aren't, then maybe you should only build the facilities in Sun, in Mountain View that we can actually afford now and not move them out for other places, hoping that someone in the future is going to allocate funds that may or may not be available. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, I think we're through all the first timers and.
Well, we have, we have some more back here. But go ahead, go ahead.
First, first timers total. There are some that haven't spoken tonight, but, okay, neither have I yet, so I'm going to grab the mic. There's, there's been a lot of talk over the last few meetings where opinions have been given, and I think that's great. That's what we're here for, is opinions. But don't quote your opinion as fact, so I'm going to try and stay with just some facts. Hopefully, I can go a little over the three minutes, but I won't try to, I'll try to be pretty close. But the three big items that I've got, SAC recommendations, so downsizing the request of both pickleball and the players' clubs, increasing the size of the fitness center at a cost of 87 to 27%, depending on which number you use, of the total project cost to increase the fitness center. And what was just set up here is 35,000 of us don't play pickleball, there's over 30,000 of us don't use the fitness centers and don't really want to pay to have excessive equipment because all the people who use the fitness center want to do it the same three hours a day. And it also left the lawn bowling greens at both Mountain View and Lakeview untouched. And I'd like to come back to that in just a minute. But I do agree with the opinion that the newer fitness center will increase use, but there is no data to substantiate that it will do that. It's just pretty much everybody's opinion. We also don't have any data that says that if it has increased use, it'll be new people. It may just be people that move from other fitness centers, all of which are underutilized. We talk about Fairway, if you take the number of pieces of equipment times the number of hours open times the sign-ins, it's about 30% used, and it's the second-most-used center in Sun City, as opposed to Mountain View, which is the least-used fitness center in Sun City. But I really want to discuss lawn bowling and why the SAC feels lawn bowling should be prioritized over pickleball, and also why a couple people have said we shouldn't even have those plans discussed here. And I would also say that the increase in the fitness center and lawn bowling was not really discussed at SAC. There were a couple presentations, but no extended discussion. Okay? So, and I won't get into the votes because that's kind of been discussed. But the elimination for, of lawn bowling at Mountain View was in one of those plans, and like I said, it's one that people are saying we shouldn't even discuss. I did note, one objection to pickleball is that giving them more courts could result in their being used for tournaments involving people outside Sun City. Conversely, the lawn bowling club, one of their big bragging points is it's used by the South Central Division of Bowls USA for tournaments. Okay? I don't care which way we go, but we ought to be consistent. Either it's bad to have outside play or it's good to have outside play. And the other thing, one of the tournaments is, is it singular or plural? There was a lot of implication in the presentation to SAC that it was a single tournament. If you look at their schedule for this year, starting in December through next March, they've got 10 tournaments on Sun City courts scheduled over that four months. Okay? In addition, okay, that's the South, South, South Central Lawn Bowling Association. That's lawn, South, well, no, yeah, lawn bowling, South Central Lawn Bowling Association. They've got either 14 or 17 clubs, depending on how you count Sun City. Count Sun City, it's one, they've got 13. If you count Sun City as five, which they do, four of which, on their website, they do not identify as being Sun City clubs. One of them says Sun City Lawn Bowling, the others are by fitness center.
Dennis, did you give us the lawn bowling? I thought you were going to do utilization.
Lawn bowling utilization, yeah, lawn bowling utilization, I show 21,000 sign-ins in 2022 versus 66,000 for pickleball. They also have 56 rinks, that's the individual lanes in, in the greens. So they've got twice the number of courts as pickleball for one-third the amount of But coming back to the, the outside association, they're a six-state, an eight-state region. They have clubs in four states. Their entire tournament is done in Sun City and Sun City West. So my big question is, are we prioritizing lawn bowling over pickleball simply because we find the pickleball people annoying? And I will agree, I mean, as an opinion, I will agree with that. They also. They also, very few of them have learned to differentiate the terms need and want. They aren't synonyms. Okay, but that doesn't mean they don't have valid points. Okay, so.
Can we come back to you a little later?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, first time comment.
Back, in the back, Linda.
Mary Doring, 127060. Just a couple of issues. As far as Marinette and what I've heard to be a parking problem, I live up that direction. I attend Marinette quite often. I have never had a problem finding a parking space. I think we have two tournaments a year where we do direct people to other areas to park. I'm usually a volunteer and I don't have a problem finding a parking space on the back side of Marinette. So I don't think there's a problem with parking at Marinette. And then also, I do play pickleball. I do other activities, as do most of my pickleball friends. I hear them talk about attending plays, concerts, lawn bowling, and I could go on and on. We aren't just pickleballers. We do other things and we are not trying to squish anybody out. I've never met anybody that mean in pickleball. So I don't, I don't think that's the case, that we're trying to squish anybody out. Thank you.
Tom Swenson, 135906. Hopefully, stay focused on what I have here. I am with the performing arts community that will use the PAC and president of Sun City Players. These four alternatives need to be compared with the original. How do you know what you have until you do that? It would seem best practices for people to see the original plans so we can rigorously compare them with that, with the original. Because that's, the question needs to ask, are the alternatives an improvement over the original? To that end, I've been given a cost summary for the original plan given to me by a board member. This is the original plan that was suspended. I strongly urge you to put the original plan and these estimates in the tall, on the town hall page. I don't believe even the SAC members themselves saw this. The bottom line is that the estimated cost for a brand-new PAC with about 400-plus seats and no stairs for us elderly folk, and including a robust rotunda, came to $12 million. The rotunda is not needed and would significantly reduce that estimate. I implore the board to take a serious look at that, at new construction versus a renovation of Mountain View building. Please compare the original PAC to these plans for renovated theaters seating 320 and without step seating. It was all on a ramp. Lastly, the PIF for Mountain View was roughly $41 million, in that range. The current amount is $25 million for Phase 1 and 2. The remaining $14 to $15 million for Phase 3 could be used for a pickleball facility. No one's talked about the Phase 3 monies. And in the spirit of our CSE transparency, who did override the will of the SAC for presenting two versus four plans? Because the original town hall had two. Over the weekend, somebody talked to whom and said we need to have four.
Bill Pearson, 133438. Their names were Wendell and Emily Fraser. The date was April 8, 1960. Their address was 1220 West Augusta Drive. They were the first residents that moved into Sun City. There was nobody else here. They were the only residents. Since that date in April, well over 100,000 people have moved into, lived and died in Sun City or moved back home. And the vast majority of them loved the community they called home. They're adopted community because remember, nobody was born here and lived here. We all came from somewhere. And when we came, we found a community that we took ownership of. And for 45 years, we were the owners. And then about 2009, a decision was made that those perfect documents that created symmetry between the membership and the board and the management team were dismantled, brick by brick. And we evolved to a hybrid where somebody smarter than us made every decision. You talk about Mountain View? It should have been done back in 2010, but somebody said, we're going to make golf our end game. And then it should have been replaced in 2016 and 17, but then when the Grand property became available, that became the next best thing. And so Grand got kicked, or Mountain View got kicked down the road. And we were caught up in this, Mr. Swenson just talked about it, this option two that was somebody threw darts at a dartboard and said, look, it's only 27 million for Phase 1 and 2. The other phase is going to be 13 million, but don't worry about that. Those weren't real numbers, guys. They were just somebody's predictions. And so now, in 2023, we have a new board focused on what? Inviting you to town hall meetings to share your opinions. God bless them. This is the fourth one I've sat through and it's painful. Not because the chairs are uncomfortable, but that's another discussion, but because people's comments are just that, opinions. And here's the real value of what the SAC has done all summer long. Oh, I sat through most of those meetings too. And the Budget and Finance Committee. They listened to members and they made data available that now decisions will be made based on true, real, existing data, not opinions. Doesn't matter what my opinion is. I have them. You all have them. Here's the beauty of what's happened this year. Since 2009, I didn't trust the GM. I didn't trust the board. I didn't trust anybody to make sound decisions. Today, after four town halls, after open meetings where we all get to talk about what we think is important and they listen, I trust the board, I trust the committee process, I trust the new GM to take that data, not opinions, and make decisions that fit budget-wise and space-wide on the 6.5 acres that Mountain View sits on. So thank you to SAC. Thank you to the nine-member board. Thank you to the new GM. Thank you to everybody that said it's time we take ownership back of this community because it belongs to all of us, starting with Mr. and Mrs. Fraser back in April of 201960. So thank you for coming here. Thank you for caring.
Good. Here's a first time comment.
Hi, I'm Lori Killian, card number 42343. So I've been down here 20 years, even though it doesn't look like it. I am the enemy. I am the pickleball player. I am the tournament pickleball player, so I want to play a lot. However, I am also an officer of a lawn bowling club. And Steve, where I want to go with this is, it's been teed up a little bit, that green at Mountain View. Right now, on our big picture of lawn bowling, it shows that that is being utilized approximately on a schedule. There's other things that go on, about six hours a week. Do you have numbers that show how often or what the usage is of those greens at Mountain View?
If you can give me back, yeah, thank you, Teresa. Let's look for those numbers, Lori.
Steve, if I, Steve, if I remember, it was eight people a day?
Eight people a day, by Dennis's memory. Let's see, that's. Lawn bowling, I thought we had a chart for lawn bowling here, maybe not. Okay, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking right at it here. Club membership, this is Fairway Mountain View Lawn Bowling Group right here. So yellow 2020, 2022 is all we have in terms of data. We don't have a 2023 estimate here. So at least you get some trend information if that helps you.
It was about 2,900-something over the course of the year for 2022.
And I'm just talking about data. I'm not saying I want to eliminate the lawn bowling at Mountain View because I appreciate the people that go to Mountain View to lawn bowl, go there for a specific reason, and I appreciate that. But we're talking data, numbers, and I just, you know, wanted those numbers and we had them to be shown.
I think we do have some of those numbers, but not anything more than you just saw at this time.
Hi, Steve. Roland LaFave, 115138. I notice they have all these data that we have. What do we have on, let's say, golf? Is that increasing or going down?
We've seen, at least the data prior to COVID was, it was decreasing. COVID brought it up a little bit, and I don't think we know too much more after that. It's still pretty flat right now.
Okay. I'm here year-round. I've been here over 10 years. You know, some people think an air-conditioned pickleball court is a frivolity, and I don't. I think it's necessary. Maybe they can enclose the present building they have at Marinette. I don't know. But that's not, that's not a luxury. I think it's a necessity in 114-degree heat in the summertime. And I don't resent any clubs. I just want to be able to utilize what we have. And I'd like to increase the, you know, the availability of the courts. Thank you.
Linda, you have someone in the back? Okay, just before, before you go there, just to address Mr. LaFave's point, though, I'm not sure if you were saying indoor is not appropriate or is appropriate?
It's advisable. Health-wise, it's advisable.
Okay, so just one of the things that hasn't been shown as far as indoor, if you have AC, you have more time that you could play, so you could use less courts. So I don't know if that's clear to everybody, but I know I get labeled here as being pro pickleball. I'm trying to think about this as what's good for the community. If I could get by with eight indoor courts that would give me basically equivalency of three times a day, three sets of people, that would be like 24 courts. How do I get 24 courts built five, 10 years from now with the funds that would be much more expensive because of present value of money, 10, five or 10 years from now? So just keep in mind that the indoor courts are not just simply allowing you to be healthier, but they allow you to have more play time than you would if you were putting outdoor courts. And therefore, you would use less courts, less courts needed. Okay, I'm sorry, where were we back? Lori?
Good afternoon. Lori Elengson, member 133335. First of all, thank you for being here today. Thank you for being concerned about your community and giving us what you feel is good for the community. We appreciate your energy, your efforts. We appreciate your input. But I also would like to applaud Bill Pearson. Because it is facts and data that the board will be using when they make a decision, not opinions. Everyone has their own opinion. But what we need to be concerned with is looking at the future, looking at what is good for the community as a whole. The definition of strategic planning is a process in which organizational leaders, which would be the three board members that developed the SAC to begin with, they define their vision for the future and identify their organizational goals and objectives. Strategic planning typically represents mid-to-long-term goals with a lifespan of three to five years, though it can go longer. This is different than business planning, which typically focuses on short-term tactical goals, such as how a budget is divided up. The time covered by a business plan can range from several months to several years. So I would like to thank the board members that developed the Strategic Alternative Planning Committee. I would like to thank the Long Range Planning Committee for all of your time and all of your information on looking at the future and realizing change is inevitable and realizing our community is going to thrive if we look at the trends and we are willing to make changes. In the most recent Sun City Independent News, the headline on the first front page talks about the vision of what people are looking for when they retire. It says, "National list naming top destinations for retirees. Phoenix ranked number 129 out of 150." It says that what people are looking for. The main attraction of surprise in the surrounding areas is more affordable housing. Is that what we want? Do we want people to move here because of affordable housing? Or do we want people to move here because of the facilities that we offer? Sun City West ranks among the nation's top age-restricted communities because they have adapted to change. Sun City needs to do the same. It's also important to note that the Northwest Valley is the home of the largest cluster of retirement communities in the state. Sun City, Sun City West, the Grand, and Sun City Festival. They're called the Grand, not Sun City Grand, because they have revamped their image. They've revamped how people look at retirement communities. I'm hoping that Sun City can follow that lead. Thank you.
Okay, I have one here.
Hi, this is Jan Schmied again, 44764. From what she said, like I said, we've been here and my parents lived here way back since the 80s. And we moved in in 2004. And yes, we have seen change. And yes, I believe in change for the younger people because the people are staying younger at the older age than what my parents did. But you can't forget the people that are still here. You can't push them out. And you can't push the people that are on limited budgets, where people, some people like in the Grand and stuff, they may be on unlimited budgets. But right now, there are people here that are limited and you can't push them out.
Okay, do we have any other first timers? Yes, please, first timers.
So my name is Karen McAdam. My number is 122045. And I'm just, I've attended all of these meetings and have chosen usually not to speak, but there was a question about data and I happen to have some data that I think I can present for you. So Lori Killian asked earlier about data for lawn bowling. There are lawn bowling rinks at five centers, a total of seven rinks there, or seven greens. The 2023 year-to-date consolidated average utilization percentage of these rinks is about 11.6%. So remember, the number for pickleball is 69. So remember, the number for pickleball is 69.5%. The numbers for just January to April, which of course is the high season for Mountain View, the consolidated average for that period is 27.6%. So as we were, the Long Range Planning Committee was given this information, this would indicate that we have at least 100% excess capacity. Given that maintenance costs could be relatively high, approximately $72,000 per year, we may want to consider repurposing some of our greens, especially Mountain View, because of the low utilization rate. So I think this is the kind of data that we need to be looking at. There was a time when we actually had eight greens in Sun City, from what, is that correct, Bill? And 1,500 members. Now they're slightly over 300 members and seven greens. Tendence, the tendency is actually falling. So in the last, what is it, 10 years, it's gone from 500 members to something around 325 members. We don't have good data on that because apparently you can become a member of a lawn bowling club for $5, and if you pay $22, you become a member of all five clubs. So figuring out what the discrete number of lawn bowlers is, has been a difficult proposition for us. But we think it's around 325, 350, 350. But it's definitely a lower number than was the case eight to 10 years ago, and a much lower number than it was 15 to 20 years ago. So, you know, I know there's a lot of emotion that's out there, but when you look at that and you say, you know, the numbers, those numbers for pickleball right now at Marinette are 85% in December, 100% in January, 116% in February, and an average over the year of 69.5%. That was last year. This year, those numbers are up by 17.5%. Does anybody think that they're not going to go up next year? So we do have data about the growth of pickleball nationally. I wonder, Steve, could you pull that up, the data that you have on the growth nationally? Because this is not something that's particular to Sun City. So nationwide. Anyway, I think everybody knows, you see pickleball everywhere you go. You see an advertisement for a cellular phone company. So there, I think you just missed, okay, so number of pickleball players in the U.S. So have a look at that, and you can see what's happened in just the last two years. So there had been steady growth prior to that. It's exploding. The average age of a pickleball player has dropped from 60 to 35. Increasingly, we are going to have people moving here who are not learning, like I did, to play when I came because I saw something I'd never tried before, but rather people that are coming as already established players. So folks, I know tensions are high and emotions are really high, but I do think that this is significant data for us to consider. And it's not saying that we're getting rid of something altogether. We're saying perhaps lawn bowling should consolidate from seven to six greens in order to accommodate the explosive growth of another sport.
Steve?
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me piggyback on something that was said there where she was referring to usage.
She's already said.
I think there's two things to note. I'm not sure whether those numbers that are higher in the winter are reflecting that that's the four-month that they've got the outsiders playing for the tournaments. The other thing is, if we're using the rec center's percentage usage, it's truly about half of that because he factored it using that you can only play every other day. So his usage already reflects the fact that 50% of the time, they aren't even available for play.
And you're speaking about lawn bowling?
Yeah, the lawn bowling, I'm sorry.
Steve, I got one.
Go ahead, Linda.
Good afternoon. Joanne Greeney, 106561. And I've attended or watched all of the SAC meetings, and I was very surprised nothing came to a conclusion. I'm definitely in favor of Plan M. One caveat is, I would like to see the Performing Arts Center have seating for up to 500 people. The reason is because that is our new quorum, and at least that will give an opportunity for everybody that comes to these meetings, which I think are going to be continuing to gain in popularity. And 500 people is not that many. Everyone would have a seat for those important meetings and everything else that we can do in that Performing Arts Center. A side note on the swimming pools, whatever you all think is best on the swimming pools, go for it. My only notice is to have the showers available at every entry for the pools. When I am at the Bell Center and I look out, of people going in and out of the pools, maybe one out of two take a shower before going in the pool. There is, I know I'm just reading sporadic notes, I apologize, you know, that you're looking at some data for who is using Mountain View. Well, hardly anyone is using Mountain View because the fitness center is so small and so out of date. Everything is so out of date at Mountain View. If we build it like it has been said, Fairway, at the time that it was being built, thought it was going to be a monstrosity and it would never get used, and look at it now, it's used in every corner. Did I say that right? Fairway is, you know, it's a nice, nice center. It's a fabulous center, and nobody thought it was going to be so popular. So just think of what Mountain View will be when it gets renovated properly, and therefore the housing, your housing values will increase in Phase One if you have a fabulous rec center there that can house all these different activities and have more arts and everything there. So that's that. And I think my final note is just, I really like our new general manager. I think he, I'm noticing some small improvements, and so I'm looking forward to seeing more improvements in the future.
Was that worth sticking around for, Matthew? Okay, any last first-timers, please? We're running out of time.
My name's Betty Colosey, and my number is 145721. I've attended three of the four town hall meetings. I have been a strategic planner and cost specialist on projects for over 48 years, although retired now. I noticed from the beginning meeting to this one that the options had changed, and I mentioned something at the last meeting at Town Hall III. From a strategic standpoint, A, B, and C are not viable. They aren't at this point, and they wouldn't be in the next few years because they've got to be costed out, they've got to be evaluated by somebody professional. The only viable one from a true strategic standpoint is Letter M. I think the architect did a great job. She did modifications. I know other people mentioned something about the architect, and she has been included everybody for something. She's put them on a progressive step, either a total step or progressive, like the pickleball. They can continue to progress in the Long Range Planning Committee over the next one to five years. If you look at B and C, where the question marks are, that's a false total at the bottom because they've knocked PAC out. Those poor PAC people don't have anything in there. So the minute they cost it, it's going to be over budget. And in Plan A, they've included using part of the operating budget. I don't know who's approved that and where that money's coming from, or if it's taken away from other clubs. And so I'm for Letter M. The other thing is, speaking of a timeline, okay, the timeline should be the program phase next. And Letter M should be the recommendation to the board, and it should be done between now and the end of December. And then your next phase should be program design, which would take place next year, and it will take the year. It may be before that, it may be, it may take eight months, it might take a year. And then 2025, I would hope we'd be doing construction. That's what I would hope from a strategic planning standpoint. And I want to remind everybody that if you're not familiar with strategic planning, the basic thing that you learn with strategic planning is, no matter what project you're doing, okay, you work the budget and your plans together, okay? It might mean modifications. And then what you do is, if, like pickleball, they want more, and I don't blame them for wanting more, I don't play pickleball, but there's no reason why they can't be on the fast track for years one through five with a planning committee so that they eventually progressively get what they want. But at least now they'd have a base. The other thing is, when you do strategic planning, you always maintain your base, and the base for Dell Webb was Phase One. We were the base. If Phase One wasn't successful, we wouldn't have had a Phase Two and a Phase Three. So you want to maintain that base, and that includes Mountain View, and we have with Fairway, and you're doing things with the softball field and everything. But if you maintain that base, that's what's going to help with the continued growth of the overall community.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
If you'll allow me the final word, I want to thank all the members of the Strategic Alternatives Committee for all of their hard work. I'd like to thank all the members from the Long Range Planning Committee for their hard work. I'd like to especially thank Sheri and Steve for all of their hard work, remembering that all of these people are volunteers. Please give them a round of applause. I want to thank management for all of their support in this process. And most importantly, I want to thank the members who came out to render their opinions and share with the board their ideas so that the board can move forward because this project is important to all of us. Thank you.
And with that, I wish you all happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for being here. Be safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
This is a copywritten production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our Recreation Center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.